Discussion.
Sue.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeHore?
Yes.
And Councilmember Salaswito?
Yes.
Uh, Creekside Kingdom.
Yep. Um, citizen, city administration has been working with Cody Chambers and Theresa Monk from Lowell Rotary repairing the rebuilding of Creekside Kingdom. For the past few months, we've met with a lot of our associates, the firm who originally assisted in building the previous structure. Um, in April, they provided us with an assessment report for Creekside Kingdom, which was funded via a grant from the LCTV Fund. To summarize, it is our best interest to completely rebuild Creekside Kingdom and will cost approximately $400,000 to do so. Rotary would like to partner with the city in fundraising for all aspects of this project, including design. The city would write again, "Our past grant has fallen to assist," and we'll reach out to the different, uh, endowment funds also. Um, Theresa Monk's here to talk about what they would like to do.
What we would like to do. I would have liked to have started a couple of months ago, but that's not going to happen. Um, we did get a proposal, and I don't know if you guys have read over this, but our next thing that we want to do is the design phase. So we want input with the community. We would like kids' input as to what they would like at their park. So if this gets approved today, then we can move forward with the design committee. After that, I have a 34-page document of what direction we go after that. But first, we have to get this approved. We, um, plan on having our own Facebook page. I don't know what it's going to be yet, and also our own email as to the rebuild of Creekside Kingdom. It will be in the paper. We're going to start fundraising as soon as we can, and our goal is 2024, hopefully in the spring, if it all comes together. And we want the community to be involved, just like they were last time, so.
I have two questions.
Okay.
I have one. What is the plan for the ground where the structure is? To leave those rocks or to remove them and put?
No. It's gonna, the whole thing is going to get torn down. The pedals will be gone. They said that is not good.
Right.
No. It's all, not only that, right now it's not ADA compliant. So we're going to get all of it updated, and it's going to be, hopefully get, um, input from disability children that have some disabilities and see what they would like incorporated as well.
Well, you answered my second question with the ADA. So now can I make a statement?
Sure.
We did, um, a design thing where we included the public when we were talking about the fairground or?
Yep.
Whatever it's called, remember Park, whatever.
Recreation Park, sorry.
That's exactly what I said. Yeah. The number one thing we got from people here, for the ones I was at, we held a few of them, was, "Well, how big is this area? How big is this area?" What I would suggest, Creekside Kingdom has a fantastic pavilion, and during the pandemic, we held council meetings there, and it was awesome. So you're doing a design where you're having kids come?
Mm-hmm.
And their parents come? If you haven't written that little pavilion, they're going to know how big the area is. I want this in this corner. You know what I mean? I just think you would get a lot better input if the people trying to help you could see the space in there.
They're going to come up with all that, and they're going to show us what, what we need to design and what our area is that we have to sit this playground in, so.
There's a, there's a new park in, um, Spring Lake that I saw last summer, and it's got some kind of permeable rubber.
Yep.
It lets the rain through, but if your grandson falls six feet off the monkey bars, it's not like falling on the pedals.
Lea did that, right? When we went to visit their splash pad, that park next to it had the exact same.
I believe you're right. I believe they did.
Rubberized for visiting ADA.
Cassidy Township Park also has that, um, boring.
Becoming more popular.
Um, but kids really do bounce off of it. I watch it happen, um, pretty, from pretty high up. Um, I, one thing I am interested in, um, is if you've done any research into nature escapes, um, where you're providing a place to play safely, both with, um, nature around, so like actual rocks to climb on. I have, I like to be outside, um, and I think it would be cool if we could put, um, safe, outdoor, natural resources in a place where it can be compliant for all children to enjoy. Um, if a child can't climb a rock, they can just as easily touch it.
There's a person on my committee right there.
Thank you.
I asked too many questions. I'm sorry.
Hello, teacher.
Yeah.
$400,000 sounds like a lot of money, but I understand today's standard that it goes very well. Has a use study been done of the park? How many actual people on a daily thing go there and use the park? Do we spend $400,000 because we like the number? Or do we go in 250 because our usage is down and we don't need such a huge park just for that? So I, I'd like to know what that would look like if we, I mean, you'd have to have somebody sit there and, and count for a day or whatever, so I'm just kind of curious what that usage for that particular park is when we have.
I don't know. I go, I go there with my grand girls about maybe once a month, and we quit going there because when they come, come home, we get little slivers in their hands, and they cry every time you try to take them off, so.
But I will say, if you, like, I go for a run, um, while they're all playing baseball or football or whatever. You've got maybe 30 to 40 kids.
I would say it's as easy as, I would say it's the busiest park in the city you know of.
Yeah.
Every time I've been there with my grandkids, there's a lot, and, you know, I didn't sit and write down numbers.
Exactly.
But I've never been there when we were the only ones there.
Yes.
So just in our preliminary, um, planning, but before we got to this point, um, they did, I mean, we've not, to say we've kept count, we, we haven't done that, um, but they gave us a couple of different options. One option was we could just kind of replace what was there, and that was like $85,000. But as what Theresa just said, it's.
It's a band-aid on.
It's a, it's a band-aid on it, exactly. It's, it's, and when you looked at it, I mean, when I read the report and looked at it, I went, well, it, it makes more sense just to start from the beginning.
And I would argue that a lot. Uh, I don't even know that a use study would be that valid because I think there are a lot of people like you and me who don't go there anymore because of the deterioration. But, and it wasn't. I grew up in that park, you know? It was always well-attended. My nephews played baseball there, and there was always kids in the park. We'd go there on weekdays, um, so I am.
But is there a, a thing about splitting it? Is there another, um, area that we need to look at updating too? Is it, is it all just here? Is this the only one? Well, what about Stony Creek Park? I mean, we'll look at the whole thing. It's, and I'm not opposed to this. I think it's great because if we can get a safe park there where people will go and, and elasen us, then I'm okay with that. I was looking at, at all the parks and, and what else do we need?
I think if you're jumping around town, Creekside should be up next anyway because Witcher Park was gone shortly before I moved in. Love Week just did Creekside Kingdom, right?
No.
Now, Stony, which probably beats.
Same as Monday, so that is one direction.
Yeah, so this in the grand scheme of things would be the next one.
Now, the park board does take into account, I think, when they do their parking park master plan, so they do.
And if you're asking for community-minded parks, there's not many more community-minded people than Rotary. So I think we got a partner with somebody on a cool project.
So there.
I had a deep inhale when I read the $400,000, too. But then when I see that Rotary's going to get their machine going and we can tap into the other community funds, when you think of all the equipment that's there, the, the dollar amount isn't so shocking.
Back in 1994, I was on, well, I was one of the foremen working on the project, so I have experienced a little bit. Um, but when we thought about replacing it and I went over there, I think it was with rose-colored glasses because I didn't want to admit that it was falling apart. And about a month ago, we went over there and really looked at it. If you haven't been over there, go look at it because it really needs to be replaced.
But for a wooden park with a gravel lot of 30 years is pretty impressive for the original project's legacy, if that helps at all.
It's a silver fact.
Yeah. In owning a construction company, I, when I, when I look at it, I see it's, I compare it to the old boat, right? It's just not worth putting money into fixing it. It just needs to go away. We'll fund, we'll find the money. We learned this community is willing to help, um, and that's what I like. So we're lucky, we have cable fund, we have the wood fund. Passport grants are huge right now. The state loves projects like this. The Rotary is a fundraising machine. I don't, I don't see it coming out of. And your goal is to start this by spring of '25?
There's only four more.
'24, Kevin.
That's next year.
Next year. They said six to nine months, but we're hoping.
And you're going to do it with volunteer, volunteers again?
Yes. Yep. And we've, um, Light and Powers said they would help with a lot of the heavy moving if we needed to, and we've already got people on board, so.
And that wood's treated, right? So it has to be disposed of environmentally responsibly, right? That's why they didn't do Witchips because they told us initially that we would have to do. You're going to use composite fiber cords now?
Correct.
And now, Eric, whatever, Harry wants to yell.
I think Harry wants to yell.
I would hope that the council would, would move forward with this. Again, I was involved in the first one, and as Theresa said, if you go, if you go, if you go over there and take a look, there's, there really is a lot of safety concerns that are going on there, um, and would want to. Only thing I would say is we, uh, our daughter lives out in Denver, so we travel out there quite a bit, and we have a four-year-old grandson now, and we attend a lot of, go to a lot of parks out in Boulder and everything, and what you had mentioned, Leah, there's in Boulder, um, it's actually called Chautauqua. Um, there's a park there that, that you feel like it's a kid's park, but you feel like you're climbing on mountains and, you know, some of it, you're going, boy, I can't believe that, that they can do that and everything because you're going, no, what happens if, you know, it's always, you're always worried about the, the lawsuits, kid falls off or whatever, but there are a lot of, um, neat, um, parks, um, and that would be my only thing is, is make sure you have lots of input and, um, because, because the $400,000, um, I think is probably low. Depending on how elaborate you want to go. I mean, we go to one, you're talking about the, the rubberized mat on there, and there's just a lot of, uh, neat things. One park we go to, you know, it has like butterflies, and, I mean, you go and find this, and then there's another little dragon that's hidden someplace else on a monkey bar or whatever, and you just, there's a lot of things to do, and I would just, um, hope that, um, and I know that they will, but research, um, because there are a lot of neat, um, parks throughout the country, just don't limit yourself to West Michigan when you're exploring what you want to see happen here. Thanks.
I won't tell anybody who really found the dragon either.
Just real fast, I wanted to say, um, Creekside Kingdom is a beloved structure in our town. I didn't even realize how much. I don't have children. I have some friends who live in Ada, and I mentioned that I lived in Lowell, and their kids, and we're not paying attention to our conversation. Perdome said, "Oh, Creekside Kingdom! We went there with my school." So, uh, there are external towns that bring their children, you know, just for that play, station time. And be thanks to Theresa for all the work she's helped us on.
The other thing I heard here tonight is safety on the existing park. Is it to a point yet where we need to close it down because it's not safe today from, from us and our children in that part? I, I'm just going out there, I mean, that's what I'm hearing, slivers and.
Yeah, I would, I would say.
It's like exposed, like where there's tires that are connected, there's exposed chains, there's, you know.
The city is.
If you ask my nine-year-old, it's his dreamland. He thinks it's very cool.
I haven't had anyone express that.
No, I, I've been.
I still take him.
Yeah, I think it's more an annoyance than, uh.
Play actual, this is my thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, if you don't mention it, it does nothing.
True.
Any, any more questions for me?
Is marketing not going to raise too? Because you guys are pretty good at this.
Uh, Cody, his for the help.
Yeah.
Another Chambers.
Uh, we'll see these.
All the money that comes through is the wastewater.
Yeah, well, all the coins you've drawn. You're going to bring some, that's right. Brian's here, what do you got? Couple hundred bucks in there. Now, the money that came through the plant.
Literally came through the plant.
If you get, it's like jelly beans. If you guess right, you get to keep it.
Yeah. Um, I'd move that we partner with Rotary to rebuild Creekside Kingdom.
I'll support.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeHore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salaswito?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Protac membership?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Number B.
Attached letter from Protac, the in-your-pack at the Michigan Coalition to protect public right-of-way. Uh, Protac has been an organization for 27 years. Their purpose is to take the lead to coordinate actions to protect local government interests and to inform municipal officials of significant developments in the area of public right-of-way management. In the past, they have been actively involved in issues regarding placement of cable boxes and other utility objects on the right-of-way. They've also been involved in protecting PEC channels and the fees associated with them. This group is currently involved in a fight regarding small cell DAS legislation that I've mentioned in the past. Cost of membership to the city of Lowell is $517.75. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve our continued membership of Protac.
You see now? Any questions tonight?
Yeah, do they have an annual meeting or something that we attend, Mike? Or does, we just belong to us?
We belong to, they've been, I mean, I'm sure they do. I've never been invited to the meeting, but, um, they do provide material, so.
See if they do, and then maybe we can get somebody to go.
Okay.
Make a motion and we approve this.
I'll support. Any other question? Sue.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeHore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salaswito?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Flock safety cameras.
Yep. As you're aware, the police department is interested in purchasing four flock safety cameras to be located at various points across the city. Um, these items were approved in our, in our budget. Um, the DDA at their June 8, 2023 meeting agreed to fund three of the cameras for the two-year contract period. Uh, the city budgeted for one of the cameras to be paid for from the general fund. We had representatives at June 5th, uh, city council work session to explain the technology and what the cameras entail. Um, I, in your package is the, uh, two-year agreement for flock safety cameras, and I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve a two-year agreement of flock safety to install four license plate rear cameras in the city of Lowell.
Any questions on the flock contract?
I've done a little bit more investigation. I've called action Captain Wyler from the Wyoming Trust Department. Uh, they originally started with 12, um, units. They are now up to 24 with several of them being, uh, portable for events that they can take elsewhere, whether it's a carpool and things like that. Because, you know, uh, the information that the applied, uh, supply be is, of course, they have tremendous, a lot more vehicles going through town than, than we do, uh, due to the fact that Grand Valley's among the areas of that. They have been able to solve several murders, uh, by flagged vehicles. They've had a ton of arrests, uh, for other violations on that part of it. Um, there is a competitor out there. It's by Motorola. Um, they do things a little bit differently. Uh, I just wanted to let you know my, uh, I did talk with Chief last Thursday briefly about it, but, uh, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of looking at this two-year, uh, plan as we move forward, so, so I just want to let you know that I did.
Awesome. Thanks for reading.
Mr. Z.
That's why I sit next to this guy. That looked good last week.
And for the public that's here, these cameras are kind of cool. You have to have a reason to put a plate or a description of a back of a car in because sometimes there's not a plate, so it can be as easy as it picks up a, a decal, right? What we learnt was is if somebody put it in, and let's say it's an Amber Alert, and it comes in the view of one of our cameras, and all it does is take a picture of the plate, it alerts the police officers, or the police department within eight to 10 seconds of picking that car up. So it, it, it's a great tool to have, um, and we can put stuff in it if we're looking for something, right? If you have a problem and, you know, the car's traveling all the time, but you're not sure it'll pick it up, and it's, it's a really neat process.
And it's networked. It's not just our camera. We're networked. The Lowell has these cameras, so if a California car makes it to Lowell, well, it's getting picked up somewhere else. If it comes into town, pops up as a stolen car, wanted a crime, we'll get alerted. Same thing with one of our cars. If we put it, we, we can't just put any description, make them a reason for a description. But it goes in, it's a stolen car, and it ends up in another state, that state's camera will pick it up, they will stop the car, and then they will call us. What do you want to do with it? And as far as people get worried about the data that is collected, it's only, it's only stored for 30 days, and we cannot look at it. It's not, it's not our system. It's in, it's in the company's cloud, and for us to look at it, we have to have a reason to go in and look at a, a, a car or a group, a group of cars or a timeframe of cars, um, and then we're audited. So we just can't get out of the system and just start perusing at our, at our leisure. We have to have a reason to go in and look. So the representative said about 99% of the cars that go through those cameras will never get looked at, but go into the cloud, and then 30 days it disappears. And this is not, the system is not attached to like the Secretary of State's database where if a car goes through, it's not going to tell us, oh, that car's got an expired plate because they won't know. It's just a picture of a car. We'd have to look at the picture, and then we have to go to another system and run the plate to see whose car it belongs to. So it's just detached from all the databases from the state. It's just a, it's basically what we put in there is what gets detected or what somebody else puts in there gets detected by us.
The captain from Long Island said they'd like to see foreign plates on carts, uh, due to the fact of, of, of that.
And it's only pictures, there's no video, no sound.
Yeah, it's not driver enforcement, it's not personal identifying information, it's not speed trapping, it's still photos that nobody will probably ever see.
One thing I think we're going to have to emphasize, as we did with Chobo Funding, this is not facial recognition software. It's not even remotely close. Well, because people, you hear cameras, and that's what they think. This ain't it.
All right. Any other questions on that?
No.
Thank you for doing that, Jim. It's awesome. We'd also like them if they bought double what they bought the first.
Ah, apparently, yeah, because we, the company that I work for, did, did try to look at it, but we looked at the, the other frame that was offered to us not to find.
All right, now, motion to approve the two-year flock contract. I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion? Sue.
Mayor DeHore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salaswito?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Paris, uh, Water Street closure for the mill.
Yep. Uh, we have received a request from King Milling to close South Water Street from the public from July 10 to July 14, 2023. This will be so they can continue construction of the mill. It'll be safer for the public to restore gas access. While this street is used primarily for King Milling, it is still deemed a public roadway, and the city council would need to approve the closure. King Milling would also close the public parking on Water Street during this timeframe, and they will notify their neighbors of what is occurring. Steve Doyle's here tonight to answer any questions you might have. Um, I approve your request. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve the closure of South Water Street as requested.
I'll make that motion to support the closing of South Water Street.
I'll support. That's a long-time local business expanding who does a ton for the community or any other. Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salaswito?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor DeHore?
Yes.
Metro Council Resolution for Hastings.
Yep. The city of Hastings has requested to leave the Grand Valley Metropolitan Council. Hastings is the farthest jurisdiction within our region. Their representative who was on the city council stepped down, and the remaining members of their council did not want to be represented. Uh, the council members didn't believe being part of GM, GBUMC would be a benefit for them going forward. At this June 1, 2023, uh, Grand Valley Metropolitan Council meeting, the board approved the request for them to leave the Metropolitan Planning Organization. The next step is for each of the governing bodies from the remaining governmental entities to approve, um, their, um, leaving via resolution, and attach Resolution 1523. Um, I'm recommending for the Lowell City Council approve Resolution 1523 to honor the city of Hastings' request to leave the Grand Valley Metropolitan Council. So just so you are familiar with it, anytime a community or jurisdiction joins, every, there's, I believe there's 40, 40 different municipalities in, in Grand Valley Metropolitan Council, every one of them has to approve it, and if someone leaves, every, everyone has to do that as well.
Sue, voluntarily leaving their.
Yes. Yeah, they don't, yeah, they, they.
Something you said, Mike?
What's that?
Was it something you said?
Probably. Usually works that way.
Motion to let Hastings do whatever they want to do. I'll support. And other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeHore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salaswito?
Yes.
What boarding commission report?
Uh, apparently we got $20,000?
You got 20.
Yeah. Yeah. For the historical.
Okay.
Sorry. Not me personally, that's what I got. I got five, but that's my usual cut. Little chat.
Councilmember Jankovic, 25% kickback. Jim?
Uh, Lowell, how, how we're met, uh, we almost made it, uh, zero outages. I think it was, what, the last day, it wasn't a fairy, something like that, some crazy squirrel or tree branch, something like that, part of it. And, but, but it's not, so we, so we didn't make that, but we still had like 99.9s and then.
99.9s.
Something, like six or seven nines in the world, wherever. You can't get any closer.
You tried to get five nines, you know?
Tried nine.
Six.
Well, one month we had no nines.[1650.42]
All zeros.
All one, but it was zero. That was, that was really good. And they're continuing to, to work on the board. I think Perry and, um, Daniel accepted, uh, the stand-in board at the meeting, so. Forward to the next one.
See, I could take the next two. Leah?
Um, Park City Mark meets tomorrow, so I'm sure Teresa's ready for me to talk about that part. Sorry, Dan. And, uh, Chamber met, uh, Riverwalk is coming up the weekend of the sixth, seventh, um, and that's all right.
Uh, planning mission, uh, we ended up, uh, tabling the used car thing until, uh, next month's meeting. City manager would, would apparently like to have legal take a look at it, so they rescinded. And now it's gonna come back up next month, so, um, that's what I got. Yeah, I don't have anything. Uh, budget monthly report, questions, comments, concerns? City managers report?
Yep. Continuing what Cliff said about, uh, funding requests, um, the community foundation met, our Lowell Community Foundation met, and, uh, the city put in a grant request to partner with the township for the splash pad. We originally put a request in for a hundred thousand dollars. They were, this last funding period, it was the last funding period for their fiscal year, um, and they were, there were significantly less funds than they had projected. And so the city did receive twenty-eight thousand dollars of the request. We can go back to the rest once they have their next letting in September, when they'll be, their endowment will be fully funded again. So there's that. Um, the G-drive, um, issue was fixed Saturday before last. From what I understand, there has been no issues since then. Um, everything seems to work out just fine.
For the record, can you please speak to how much we paid to have it redone?
Absolutely, nothing.
Thank you. Mourned.
Mourned, yeah, it was done, it was, it was covered by the contractor. So there, there's that. Um, the Grindle and Shepherd, um, projects are out for bid. Deadline for that is July sixth. Uh, Monroe is moving along pretty well. At our last meeting, they said we were about a week ahead of schedule. Um, I have to believe that's still the case. They did, they are, they did start moving up today. Uh, they're moving up to, uh, King Street, and they're gonna work on the water right now, and then they'll go, they'll come back and go, uh, to, uh, to Fremont. We did ask the contractor, we did get some requests. They were going down Washington today. Being that Washington isn't in the best shape, we did ask the contractor to make sure they're going down Jefferson, which they.
Yeah, the trailer made a ton of noise.
Yeah, we, we addressed that, so, um, hopefully they'll, they'll continue to follow that. We did receive our Merzachul Rail Report. Um, good news, um, we moved from sixty-seven to sixty-eight percent. The, the, um.
I've used this one.
The, uh, the required contributions, at least, on the city's end, have gone up significantly. However, they're not on our end. Um, they're actually on Light and Power, and I don't know if they've seen, I don't know if Charlie's seen the actual, I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it yet, but, um, they've gone up. The, the required contribution to on a quit a bit on there. Our end went down because we actually, when we bridged and we re-emortized, it actually, on paper, lower cost. We're still making the same, the plan is to still bank the same contributions we would make if, if that reduction wasn't in place. So, um, I'm looking, I'm looking at it, and we're, from what I, from what I looked at, when I looked at the actual, they will just contribute to make the contribution that we made this year for next, that we plan to make this fiscal year for next fiscal year. Because it's, I believe it's like, it's gone down about three thousand dollars a month, um, even on our end, just with how we, how we structure it. But we make, keep making the same payments we'll be making with surplus payments. So we're in, we're in very good shape there. Well, I, as long as the market, well, the market's not the best right now, but I thought it was gonna be a lot worse with the market, and it turned out to be okay. The water restrictions, um, they're still in place. Um, I can tell you, I've been looking at the data daily. People are being respectful of the, of the restrictions, and, uh, I do thank them for that. We are, I think the highest DAS seen is just over a million gallons. So people are being, uh, being respectful of that. And, um, the one last thing, um, we've had about four issues with vandalism over the last couple of weeks over here at the, uh, at the bathroom here. This evening, there was a fire. Um, somebody lit the bathroom, uh. Fire. So, um, we are for the time being going to shut down the restroom and just have it open for events. Usually, once the weather gets a little hotter, the vandalism tends to stop. But for the time being, and I know the police department, they're looking at the, uh. So, yes, um, one of the issues with the recording system that we gotta look at is the recording system for those particular cameras. For most, not the ones that are on the showboat, um, unless we can really track the time when we think it happened, it's, it's very difficult for us to go into the, um, to the software to, to follow the view. You almost have to go through like a week and a half worth of video. This incident that we had tonight, we have a pretty good timeframe. We, we have, police department does have a good idea of who they think is doing them. It's just a matter of being able to catch them, so, um, we are working on that.
Did you change the time zone then in a month?
Uh, they were doing that, I think, they were doing that as we, as we.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Any questions? I have nothing to point to. Uh, council comments, Cliff? Jim? Marty? No, no, no. I got something better. So, uh, normally I do this at our announced city council meeting, which, uh, is, is the third, and, uh, we're not gonna be here because it's, it's July holiday. The following week, July tenth, our illustrious mayor here turns forty. So if you see him out on the street, we'll wait. And make sure you give him a lot of grief. Um, I do this every year to it. I thoroughly enjoy doing this. As you can see.
He's actually forty-three.
If I'm known for anything, it's my humility. That's it, that's all I got. Otherwise, it's an awesome day. This morning, yes, morning, Marty and I went to WION with, uh, Charlie from Overlight Power, discussed a little bit about summer power loads, uh, which was cool, because Charlie has a wealth of information on solar and electric vehicles and green energy and summer loads and buying power, selling power. It was, I learned a lot, and I, I hope the people listening did too. Uh, we talked about Chamber events, Riverwalk, uh, stuff, the police fire softball game. WION, if you don't listen, is the best thing we have in this community that's not in this community, right? They're in Ionia, and they treat us very, very well. They posted our water restrictions on their homepage for informational purposes, and it's for all our flyers. And they literally offer Marty and I, and any of us, really, we take a mic before, we'll eventually get, uh, Chief to blindly agree to us. Open door policy over there to go on there, and it is, uh, really awesome. And then, uh, a few of the city facilities Charlie hadn't visited, so we took, Marty and I took Charlie around this afternoon, went over to visit Dan and his neat and tidy office over there at the D W. Yeah, you need one more piece of paper. One more. Took, um, over to see Shannon at the fire department, and, uh, the most impressive part, we went to the water plant. And, uh, I personally had forgotten how cool that is and how much really goes into bringing us award-winning water and the quality and care and compassion that those guys put in and analysis that they have is always impressive. So up until roughly three minutes ago, it was a pretty great day today. Yeah, it really was. While we were at WION, they streamed, and a listener wrote, "I really enjoyed the show and the banner with the ambassadors from Lowell." They are super nice guys. Apparently, he's never really met us, but, as are you. And he's talking about Jim, wow, was that the mayor? So Mike introduced the song, and he had to do the Laker radio DJ.
Tell him what they said.
No. Okay, fine. Introduced it, Stone in Love by Journey. Whoever it, whoever was is good. Sign him up for the show. We, we laughed in there. Lowell sounds like a great place with a wonderful community spirit, which you guys hit on tonight. I would love to visit Lowell one day. I've seen Lowell's Riverwalk on your awesome website. He goes on to talk about Jim, kindest regards, John. John is from London, England. So if you don't think our little community's not getting out, and we're not known, there's a good example of, you know, good things travel. And where was the other guy who commented good, uh, Toronto, right? Yeah, Toronto. Yeah, they're streaming that, little cool little radio station all over. And I did introduce Journey, because they have the second one.
It's generally found that the more people like the mayor, the further they live from Lowell.
I wasn't surprised that it was a Canadian. And England and Canada.
Why is stealing our geese?
Yes. You could laugh, but that's the nicest thing you ever said to me, so. I look for a motion to go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion.
You forgot me.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Marty's fault.
No, it's not. Happy birthday. Um, I participated this weekend in the River Trail Run triathlon that they had put on, and I just wanna say a special thank you to Grant and his wife, I'm blanking on her name, um, but they put on a fantastic, fantastic event. Unfortunately, I got flat tires on my bike, um, I don't wanna talk about it. But I do wanna say thank you to Lowell Fire Department and our police department. They were all out there, literally directing us where to go. Chief literally had to yell at me, and then I had a curb, which is probably how the flat tire happened. But they, they were out there. I mean, they were out on the river. Their participation in our safety and, in, um, not just the participant's safety, but other community citizens' safety as well means a lot to me personally, so thank you.
It was a total, ended up with seventy-five, right? Something like that?
Yeah, it was about seventy.
That's pretty cool for a short notice first-year thing, so it says a lot about the organizer.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, I'm good, that's all right.
Motion to go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosures by state and federal statute. I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Motion in the second to go into closed session and discussion. Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweidel?
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.